The agenda was properly posted?
Yes.
All right, let's stand for the pleasurable evening.
Pleasurable evening to the flag of the United States of America and to recall that we are with which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item is public appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak about any subject that's not a specific agenda item. We have one, this is Heidi, right? Okay. And public appearance item four, Sarah Valencia, 213 Weldbridge Road. Sarah, come on up here if you could. If you sit at the table, you'll have a microphone.
Sit here?
Yep.
So I'm Sarah Valencia at 213 Weldbridge Road here in the village of Cottage Grove. And I've been reviewing the past minutes of the, and the meeting packets of the Cottage Grove Village Board meeting, the village committee meetings, and the Cottage Grove Town Board meetings to better understand the Shady Grove conflict. I've learned that the Shady Grove development has been in the planning phase since 2016. It's followed all required due process and has been the topic of multiple public hearings. Public feedback has been considered and town residents have repeatedly discussed eight core issues with the Shady Grove development. All eight of these issues have acceptable resolutions, and I'm happy to offer more detail regarding those eight resolutions that I've identified through my research at the board's request. I feel that the town of Cottage Grove is holding our village captive. Over the past few years, town residents have targeted some village board members to sway them to agree with the town's position, which currently is to block the final stage of this project, the rezoning. The outlook of this project is hurting future development of the village of Cottage Grove. Other developers are watching what's going on with this project and are waiting to see if the village board will give in to outside municipalities' demands. This reputation will be difficult to overcome, keeping Cottage Grove from growing and reaching our full potential. I urge the village board to listen to the village commissions, the expertise of the village staff, and the reality of the various studies that have been completed by unbiased parties, and vote to rezone Shady Grove subdivision based on the final approved plan. Given the circumstances, I would also suggest that the subdivision be given a name other than Shady Grove. Village board members are elected to represent village residents and work on behalf of the interests of the village. We need to have confidence that our elected officials have the best interest of the village of Cottage Grove at the heart of their decisions. We should not allow an outside municipality to have undue influence on our village board members. Thank you.
Very much so. All right, and the other one isn't. Oh yeah, that's, okay, that's Heidi Murphy. All right.
I think she wants to speak.
Yeah. Okay. All right, Heidi Murphy, come on up, we'll see, different subject, but.
Different subject, yes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Heidi Murphy. I live at 3002 Pheasant Run in the village of Cottage Grove. And I just wanted to talk briefly about the dog license fee that came up, changing the ordinance to impose a fee for dogs not having licenses in the village of Cottage Grove. And I would instead like to propose maybe a different use of our resources. Instead of imposing a fee, perhaps starting a PR campaign on the need and the reasons why you should license your dog in the village of Cottage Grove, how that can help dog owners, where the fees go, how that helps the village in general, and maybe include other kind of responsible dog ownership in the village of Cottage Grove as part of that PR campaign. And I find that maybe picking up after your dog might be more of an issue than maybe not being licensed. So if we, also if we impose a fee for a dog not being licensed, we're wasting valuable resources in our police department and enforcing that. And I don't think that the residents should be questioned really for, only for walking their dog in the village. There's no other probable cause to stop someone and question them on whether their dog is licensed. So maybe we can go another route and show people why it's important to license your dog in Cottage Grove rather than changing and imposing a fee. So, yeah, hopefully we can use our resources wisely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have. Item five, discuss and consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting of January 21st. Any comments, corrections, or additions?
Motion approved.
Okay. Second. Motion and second to approve the minutes as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Stay motion passes. Item six, at this time I'll make the motion that the village of Cottage Grove Village Board enters into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985, paragraph one, paragraph F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations, operator's license application. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. We'll need a roll call vote.
Ellen?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Enric?
Aye.
Limburg?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Okay, we're now in closed session. We'll need everyone to leave the room for this, except for the applicant. So if you want to hang around again, we'll give everybody a couple of minutes to thank you for coming. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, item eight, presentations to the board. A presentation by Bill Schultz on Miracle League.
Well, thank you all for your time tonight. My name is Bill Schultz. I live on the west side of Madison and want to talk to you about a program that I'm rather excited about. When I was, first of all, I was born with one leg and partial left arm, and my love was baseball. And I could keep up with the kids until I was about nine or 10. At the age of nine, I went to Little League tryouts with my buddies, did really well in the tryouts. We were told to come back the next day to be assigned a team. So up I went with my parents. And the commissioner started walking towards, towards me and my parents and said to me, "Bill, we can't let you play because you're either going to hurt yourself or you're going to hurt somebody else." And that was pretty devastating. But my love for baseball has never waned. I've been a Little League coach at West Madison Little League for 15 years. And I know the joy and excitement that kids have playing baseball, and the social skills, and the ability to make new friends. That's what I saw about the game of baseball. But last spring, I was watching NBC Nightly News. They have a segment called Inspiring America. And up came this feature called the Miracle League. It was a Boston Red Sox pitcher by name of David Price, who in his hometown, underwrote a construction of the Miracle League. And what it is, is it's an organization out of Atlanta, Georgia, that helps communities build baseball fields for kids with disabilities, typically ages three through 19. It's a synthetic surface. The outline of the field is just like a baseball field. It's slightly smaller than a Little League field. But the rubberized surface allows wheelchairs, walkers, kids who have difficulty in walking. It has especially been very successful with children with cognitive disabilities, autism, Down Syndrome. And I just, I got so excited, and my wife says, "I can see you as excited with your own job." So I took a trip down to Atlanta, spent three days with them, was even more excited when I left. And my, my vision is to build a Miracle League that services all of Dane County. And I met Sean at a Parks and Recs meeting. All the Parks and Recs directors came, thanks to the director of Middleton. And I did a presentation to them. And certainly land is the big, big issue. And you might tell them, Sean, how we, what happened then, or whatever.
Yeah, we met in December, and it just so happens that we have a park, Bakken Park, that has about 37 acres that's not completely developed yet. And so I kind of got in contact with Bill after the fact and said, "This might be a good fit for Cottage Grove."
And again, this is for all of Dane County. One of the concerns I had in my head was the location, but in talking to other leagues around the country, when parents hear of this program for their kids with disabilities, distance is not to deter. At the same time, I think this is an ideal spot with respect to accessibility. It might even be able to attract kids from neighboring counties. We're not going to just limit it to Dane County, but certainly as our focus. I went to the Department of Public Instruction too, and I asked them for statistics about kids who are designated children with disabilities. And there's 9,100 kids in Dane County that have been designated as having disability. But that does not include home school, private school. We also start the program at the age of three, so it doesn't include them as well. So there is a good population of kids out there that we could really, you know, we could really attract. And this is also, as you'll hear in a video later, this is really a program for the parents too. I don't know if you've ever had kids with disabilities or know of kids. There is an incredible amount of pressure and attention they have to give to their kids. And this is a program where they can sit down in the bleachers and see the joy and excitement in their kids' faces, help them be normal, help them feel normal. And so just would like to take you through a, just a quick slideshow here. Again, it provides opportunities for individuals with disabilities to play Miracle League baseball regardless of their abilities. It's a non-competitive league. Nobody wins. Each child played, it's a two inning game. Each child bats, fields, throws, scores a, scores a run, and has a volunteer buddy beside them all the time to help them field the ball, bat the ball, whatever. So it's non-competitive, so there's not that pressure of, and every team has a three-year-old in it, on it, and an 18-year-old on it, so it's a mix. It was, the first field was open in 2000 down in Atlanta. We're now in four to six states. There's 305 Miracle Leagues around the country. In the state of Wisconsin, there's one in Appleton, which is thriving. Milwaukee, which is currently underwritten by the YMCA over there, and new ones in Kenosha and Eau Claire. And when I called and said, "Is there anything near Madison?", there was this big gaping hole, and I said, "Okay, let's go." So anyway, determination, the heart these kids have, the joy they have in getting involved in a game that is not just there to play the game, it's also a vehicle to help them grow as a, as a, as a child and feel, feel normal, feel like one of the guys or one of the girls. It's a flat and smooth accessible surface. It looks just like a baseball field. This is a, there's three types of surfaces that we can, you know, we can choose from. With Sean's help and other people, we can figure out which one is the best. It includes a scoreboard, fencing, bleachers, dugouts that are inclusive, so you can wheel a wheelchair in there, or the kids can come in and out of the dugout. It's definitely designed specifically for disabled kids. Sometimes if there isn't a playground being, having been built, we typically put an inclusive playground beside it. But you've got the splash plant pad going in right now. And I think, you know, we're excited about the fact that you've got other things around because while their kids are playing, their child is playing baseball, their siblings around, what do you do with them? So you've got, you've got that situation. Building self-esteem and just letting them just experience something that, with other kids, and to develop friendships. It has changed lives and I've, I've heard of a lot of stories from around the country from other league presidents. Baseball Hall of Fame has an exhibit for The Miracle League. Major League Baseball players have supported financially as well as time-wise towards The Miracle League. And the clubs have also underwritten some costs. The Brewers Foundation donated to the Milwaukee field and we'll probably be talking to them as well. Includes children ages three to 19 in the Dane County area. Some leagues, once they've grown, they've actually developed an adult division, but that's down the road. My focus really is the kids. So, our, our goal is to raise 500,000, which would include the rubberized surface, fencing, inclusive dugouts, and scoreboard. Since this slide, I've talked to a couple of foundations and they say, "You know, Bill, what you ought to do is shoot for two years of operating cost in addition to the field." And so, it'll probably be closer to about 600,000. The field itself, we've cut, cut down to about 450, but if you add about $80,000 a year in operating cost, it gets up to about 600,000. And I'm in the, in the middle of beginning to talk to foundations and identifying private donors for this cause. I'd like to just show you a, a video. It's from The Miracle League in Raleigh, North Carolina. And they just put this together about five months ago. And it really talks about the essence of, of Miracle League. What is it really all about? No sound. It takes about 15,000 square feet. From home plate to center field, it's about 115 feet. We really do have some, that's middle kids that put them on the fence, but it's not, it's kind of a other-sized Little League field.
Can I play through the TV? Just set, just turn the TV volume up again?
Uh, no.
No?
The, it's going through a certain connection of VGA cable that doesn't have sound.
It is, yeah. Do you have any questions for me while we're waiting for the blasting? You have any questions for me?
Have you engaged in the fields that have been established to figure out maybe some of the, the things that they learned along the way? Sure you have one after Milwaukee, Kenosha, etc.
Yeah, combination of, the biggest issue, of course, is the, the land and then the funding. But they have to, on the other side of the coin, ship volunteers here to be companies. And so, high school kids are, mostly these high school kids, eighth grade up, are the big suppliers, but also with JBW.
Okay.
And they'll, like, if you go to a sorority or fraternity or an organization on campus and say, "This would be a great project if you consider." So, that's, that's the, that's the other thing. And, and then also to go out and talk to people like the Autism Society, Down Syndrome Society in Wisconsin, school counselors from all the schools, to make them aware of this program. And there's online registration for it, but we really have to get the word out. We don't want to do too much until we get some of this other detail hammered out, but especially if we are able to say, "We've got, we've got a location." And to go out to donors and say, you know, "We're, we're this far down the road and we've got, we've got a home and this is, this is what we need as far as finances." I'm actually going to foundations right now, asking for advice as to if they will, you know, then in turn get interested. I'm not doing a hard sell on this.
Right.
To me, this is, as you can tell, I'm not very passionate about it. So, it kinda comes true when I talk to them. We're, we're trying to get an audience for the American Family Dreams Foundation. I've talked to the Madison Community Foundation and they normally do not fund things involving sports, but when I talk to them about the purpose, they said, "Please come back and we want you to apply."
The Miracle League game is two innings long. Every team has approximately 15 players and four coaches. The coaches are kind of backbone of our program, are always showing when, when games are going on. And, you know, the kids, their first experience with a coach becomes a lasting impression. It gives such a great roll-off to the kids who are on the field. And there's a buddy for every player out on the field. And those buddies work one-on-one with the players under the direction of the coaches. Every player's gonna score a run during each inning. And by the time the innings are all done, everybody's in there and we go home.
You know, it's a real community among the parents at the field. You know, some of the parents, they never thought their kid would, would hit a ball or they never thought their son would use his walker to go around the bases, which we've seen happen. Or they never thought they'd crawl to go from third to home or to get somewhere. And they're just, you know, they're overwhelmed by the idea that something as simple as the game of baseball played with a group of friends could lead their kids to try different things that they never dreamed they could do.
I'm just excited for the parents as well for the kids. Because when I hear several parents coming to me and, and telling me that, you know, for them to be able to go get a box of pop, popcorn or go to the restroom without having to keep up with a child is just incredible for them. The parents and the kids are a community on this field. They come to the games with the, the child's number painted on their car. I mean, it's like, you know, it's like going to a real baseball game. It's just a different community.
And we have two baseball fields right now. We're getting ready to build a third field, which will expand our opportunity to reach the triangle and give even more players the opportunity to experience the joy that the Miracle League can bring them.
I have never in my life been in a place where so many people from different walks of life, people that are rich, people that are poor, people of different skin colors, different cultural backgrounds, different faiths, and different ages have come together, really, and put the, the kind of the joy and the happiness of a group of children ahead of everything else.
I don't think I've ever seen anyone leave the field without a smile on their face because the joy that it brings to anyone who's there, whether it's a player, a parent, a spectator, or volunteer, that enthusiasm is just not something that you can easily stamp out at any time.
There's a miracle, or two, or three, that happen every game. Wherever you go, if you've never been to a Miracle League game before, you go to a game. Before you leave there, you will see a miracle that you think could never happen. That's what got me the very first game, when we had kids that had crutches on, that would drop those crutches and walk, had nothing done before. There are a lot of good people, but our community, this doesn't happen. We have a great executive director. We have a great board, their working board. People donate their time and their energy and their money to make sure that 16 Saturdays a year, that the families and children of The Miracle League come out and have a big day. And that is as important as anything we do.
Our club will be, the program will be typically, I think Tuesday, Thursday, but it would depend on how many participants. Maybe that game at 5:30 and then at 7 o'clock. I'm not sure about weekends, only because we really need to know what's up with the parents and also volunteers. I, the one thing I hope you saw in that was the, the smiles and the joy from the volunteers. Those are all high school kids and so forth. What I hope is that the village would see this as a program that you can be proud of, but also a program that would involve a lot of different ages. And would be not, not only to the kids that are playing, but to the parents and, and for the, and for the community itself. So, I'm, I'm rather excited. I was excited when Sean called me and said, "You know, maybe we've got something here as a possibility." But I know we've gotta go through some hoops still, but I hope that Cottage Grove might take this on as a program to be proud of and a program that, that Dane County would be proud as well. So, I really thank you tonight for your time.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Just real quick, as Bill mentioned, that most of the time the fields would be, the field would be programmed as a Miracle League field, but we would also, Parks and Rec would also have an opportunity to program that field. And it would be, we would use it for like our T-ball league. Or we could actually use it to do a really cool adult kickball tournament. Because the, the fences are only about 115, 120 feet, so which is kinda perfect for kickball as well.
And I'll tell you, if we ever develop an adult league, I'm, I'm excited for it.
Thanks. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you for having me.
All right, item nine is unfinished business. Discuss and consider direction for posting, publishing, delinquent personal property tax bills.
So, if you remember back in December, when I had asked for approval over a resolution to write off the 2015 delinquent personal property balances. At that time, I was directed to send the final notice. And though any who haven't paid, get further direction on what you wanted to do as far as publication or anything else. To this date, we have not received payment. So, I'm looking for direction on what we want you to do, if anything.
Did you say that one of them is no longer in business, any?
Actually, two of them.
Okay.
The, there's five that make up the balance. Capital Associates is still around. Metal Rodica is still around and Village Cafe. The John Whiteley Doing Businesses Best Cleaners, I think that's been sold now. It's called Master Cleaners. And then the Toons for Toons is, they are no longer a business. So, two of the five are, are no longer around.
So, there's no way to confuse like the Master Cleaners, they're not gonna get confused with the same? Okay. I mean, I'm fine with publishing and I mean, that's what we talked about doing. I don't know what else we can do.
But are you publishing, like, where and what do you want me to publish?
Yeah. In the fine print section of the minutes, nobody reads that anymore.
Well, I think they could be published in, maybe in a year or two.
So, say, what would you like me to say and are we gonna pay to publish them or?
Do we have to? It's not free, I mean, we gotta buy ad space or whatever.
I just have a concern that if, like, I would like that they pay their, this is the personal property tax. Like, that would be good, but I'm just concerned that what message we're sending to other businesses that may wanna come here, like, that if you don't, I mean, I get if you don't pay your taxes, yeah, the village is gonna publish on you, but, I mean, there's a reason why they aren't paying, maybe, maybe there's some reason why. But, I mean, they're still operating right now, like, what's the point of publishing?
Throw a good one at the bad one. It's not, I don't want a business to come to the village and just pay their taxes. You know? And this is a tiny part of the tax.
Personal property tax.
It's not the real estate, it's the personal property.
But this is no, it's their tables, their taxes.
We could put it on the village website also, correct?
Yep.
That would make more sense.
Yeah, minutes of website is fine for me. What do you guys think?
Where would it go on the website?
You'd have to create a separate.
Big banner.
The headline.
Yeah.
It could be a delinquent tax link and we could list them.
Not too, not too flashy.
Yeah, sort of something that fits in with whatever else is on there. I guess Lee, that's another question. Like, we always ask, what do other municipalities do? Are you aware of?
I'm not, I'm not sure, but I don't think that it really has, I mean, I've heard of other municipalities doing this. And the question is, how big of a problem is it? How much does it cost to try to collect it? What's your success rate? I mean, and that's only something you're gonna learn over a period of time.
Do you refresh us what dollars we're talking about here?
Total of 1,500.
1,500 total?
Well, yeah, the, the three left over, or the three that are still in business is like 915.
That's, okay. All right.
The website is good enough.
Yep.
Well, where would it go on the website?
Create a.
Is that a staff discretion?
Maybe under, under the treasure, put a delinquent notices and list them under there.
Perfect.
Just add a link, I guess.
Yeah. Depends on how much you wanna save, but it's gonna cost you.
They're pretty expensive.
75 bucks, 100 bucks.
Yeah.
I'm just curious too on what kind of impact it really would have if people are deciding not to go eat at these places or whatever, you know, or use these businesses that they use. If you wanna be the most popular, you put it on Facebook. But.
The only one that, like, you probably know where it is is Village Cafe. I mean, whereas Capital Associates or Metal Rodica, so then aren't we unfairly, like, discriminating against one over the others? Like, can people go to Metal Rodica?
They do specialized painting on either motorbikes or vehicles or stuff.
That's not progress.
Oh, okay.
Does it pay for charges for public notices that we put in there about?
Yep.
Tag them along with what it was probably less expensive, you know, made by itself.
I, not legally. I mean, it's not part of that notice.
There's, there's requirements around public notices versus this. I think just under the, on the website, it's.
Create a link.
Can you make a motion?
Yeah. Oh, I'll make a motion that we have staff create a link on the village website that's consistent with the rest of the website for the delinquent personal property tax. Is there a second? I'll cycle.
Do you know, like, do you need direction as to what needs to be said then also?
I'm taking it as it's just gonna be a list, if you want something more.
Just the name and.
List and the amounts.
Name and the amount, yeah.
Or can't you just put, put the resolution 2018, 22? I mean, it talks about.
Oh, put the resolution.
The names, the amounts, I mean, you can, can you link it to the?
But this.
I'm looking at Lisa, 'cause she's the website.
But this resolution is to write off the amounts.
Maybe send a business, it's a nice letter to check the website out, your listing.
The other question I have, so are you gonna?
Or can't you just put, put the resolution 2018-22? I mean, it talks about.
Oh, put the resolution.
The names, the amounts, I mean, you can, can you link it to the?
I'm looking at Lisa, because she's the website. But this resolution is to write off the amounts.
Maybe send a business as a nice letter to check the website out, you're listed as a link.
The other question I have, so are you going to put the, all the businesses, including those that are out of business?
I would suggest not putting the ones that are out of business, because there's no, I don't see any, there's no recourse to them and I don't see any, I can't see them paying for any reason anyway.
And so, they're just going to sit on the books then?
No, writing off.
No, this is getting written off. It was written off in 2018, anyway.
We've done these same businesses for years, I think.
Yes, they're repeated others.
Yeah. Okay, well, we have a, I guess, a motion and a second to put it on the website, is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes. All right. Item 10, discuss and consider rescheduling the joint board meeting. I sent everyone an email, thank you for not hitting reply all. I had talked with Matt, actually, the day before, I think it was the day before we closed Village Hall and Village offices due to the cold. And Thursday, the day that Village Hall was also closed during the cold, was supposed to be the joint board meeting, which is part of logic for canceling it. Even though it's starting to warm up, I don't, may have as much faith in the weather man as maybe Chris Hampton does. Any thoughts on an alternative date? I mean, obviously, the fourth Thursday works, but if we can do it sooner, and find it sooner of February, it'd be the 28th. And then we had, either they had a meeting or we had a meeting, pretty much for every other date. 28th works for me.
Yeah.
Whether you're 28th, 6:30 here?
Sure.
Okay, I will send out an email tomorrow to Chris and Dan again, if that's okay.
Should we do a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion for that.
I'll make the motion to have the joint meeting on February 28th at 6:30 at Village Hall.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to reschedule the joint board meeting for 6:30, February 28th, here at Village Hall. Any other discussion?
That assumes it's okay with the town.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Item 10, new business, discuss and consider use of Village Hall for candidate forum hosted by Cottage Grove Chamber of Commerce. We have done this a couple times in the past, I had an email from Paula here someplace. Chamber of Commerce, oh, that one, there we go. She's not able to be at the meeting tonight, but they wanted, here goes the date, Thursday, February 28th. I mean, if they're going to do it during the day, that's fine, I guess.
I don't think doing it during the day, just because people probably have jobs, I'm guessing.
That creates an issue, I mean, I don't have an issue with them using Village Hall, but I guess I could get back to her and find out what time they had in mind, how they wanted to do it. I mean, if we have to go later and start, like, the town at seven, they started at seven, then maybe we could have one after the other, I don't know.
Did they, did Paula reach out and tell you guys the time at all that she was thinking?
It doesn't, it just says the date, so I guess I could find out more information.
I'm assuming it's going to be in the evening.
Yeah. Yeah, if they're going to do six o'clock, we could do seven o'clock, I don't know how much time they need, but maybe that's where we start.
The forum?
Yeah, at least an hour. Yeah, because we have six trustee candidates.
So, that's probably a little bit more important.
Yeah. Okay. Any thoughts, I mean, otherwise, I'll get ahold of Paula. I'm fine with giving them permission to use it, I guess, can start there. Does that work for everyone?
Should we do a motion to table that?
Yeah, we'll need a motion to table then, for the, I guess.
Does it open up for other people to use the room for political purposes?
Because it's hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, it doesn't, we've done it before, I guess, I, we have.
Well, it's a good, it's a good question, and there is, we haven't really ever defined what's acceptable and what's not. And I think that we've tried to, we've pretty much taken the policy that it's really not available for use.
True. Unless it's for village purpose.
Yeah.
But, or can do whatever, or wants to do.
Yeah.
Doesn't the chamber have another site that they could use within the chamber membership?
I mean, I, I think it's a great idea, I'm just not sure that, like, village property, if that's, you know.
I know the school board actually has their debates or whatever you want to call them inside the schools, and I don't know if there's a difference there.
You like the auditorium?
No, like, they did it at the library up at Glacial Drum.
I think the distinction normally is if it's partisan versus not partisan, so.
And the chamber is hoping to have it broadcast, so that's why they wanted to do it here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And I mean, I remember the format, they go around, everybody gets basically the same question, you get three minutes old, you know, thing like that.
It is, it is for village purposes, technically, because it's for elected officials here in the village.
This is why the staff didn't want to say yes or no, because I say I'm, you know, politics, so that's why I put it on there for the board.
I don't have any strong, it's one way or the other, but I'm fine with letting them use it, you know, because of the.
I mean, you have a good example, that's cool, only because it's not part of any school board election like that, it's more of a community.
And I believe the school is an option.
Okay.
Because Paula was in contact with Joyce and Dan on the topic, and they weren't talking a charge, which is a concern of hers, which I agree with. But, yeah, I think one of our wishes was to broadcast it and maybe just go portable like we do for EMS and some of the, some of the other meetings, as an option.
Okay. I think allowing, I'm tossed a little bit, because we've had this discussion before, you know, do we use this for the, you know, reasons of it? And if the school's open for it, I'd say that would be a good choice.
So, the school first, Joyce?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm good either way, I'm more concerned about the date conflict.
Yeah.
Because we did fill out a survey on what date works best and.
Yeah, that was a great idea.
And I think, right, you're right, that this takes precedence over the joint meeting date if they want to do it on the 28th, I would think, and the time's conflict.
I think it's a great idea, I like the idea it's in the evening rather than the day, that offers more people the opportunity to come and listen.
Does somebody want to make a, one of the things that we're kind of looking to do is to create, have people make motions, because just over the course of the last couple of meetings, there's been some discussions and then they kind of just stopped and we moved on. So, I think if you, if there's some consensus as to what we want to do and who should do it, we would be looking for it.
The emails, obviously, to Lisa, I got it too, but, so it'd get direct staff to contact the chamber and see if they're going to possibly do this. Is the school first, is that what everybody's?
I just think it would be better, that's just my opinion.
I think there'd be more room at a school also.
Yep, that's what I recommend.
You reminded me about that survey, I think the 14th is the date that all six of us are available as well.
Yeah, March 14th.
And Valentine?
March 14th.
Nobody wants to come here Valentine's Day.
No one wants to go home after you come here on Valentine's Day.
So, now that we've made a motion about the joint meeting, is, like, do we need to make a motion to unmotion it?
Or you make a motion for the 14th. You know, I mean, let's keep it, we'll keep it simple. And, you know, we'll, you can say that the setting up the meeting for the candidates takes precedence over the meeting of the town.
And Jim, did you say all six are available on the 14th of March as well?
Correct. But the chamber has a conflict with that night. Well, then why they put it?
The chamber of dates.
Well, it's all, all he understands. I'm looking at it as a two-sentence email, Paula just says that.
The only day?
There, there's only two nights where all six are available, the other night, the chamber had a conflict with it, so.
Okay, so we need a motion, like we said, a superior motion, that the candidate forum takes precedence over the joint meeting, and asking if they can use the school first before coming to us, I guess.
I will make that motion.
Okay?
On second.
All right, motion and second to have staff contact Paula at the chamber and let her know that that date will take precedence over the joint town meeting, and also ask if they can use the school facilities first. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes, thank you.
Just as a addition, I assume everyone's okay with it being recorded if it's, if it's here?
Yeah, honestly, I think it should be recorded if it's here.
Well, that wasn't in the motion, though.
No.
I mean, as far as that's recording, but just as far as being here, the motion was just to have it at the school, not.
Yeah. I guess Lisa's going to have to let us know if that's not going to work for them at the school, and we'll go from there. But I agree, the school would be a better place if they could do it. All right, on to 10B, discuss and consider procedure for ordinance consideration and approval. Lee and I have had a conversation too, and I don't know, I'm just trying to find, the ordinance committee's been dormant for quite a long time, and I don't know, is the ordinance committee the best way to go about doing this?
Well, this is completely your decision. I put together a memo, just so you could see that, that we've tried both ways. We had the, we had the ordinance committee, and that started out with two trustees, and then, then we added two more, two more citizens, to get citizen input. Seems like we had, oh, yeah, okay, the ordinance was originally created in 2009 and provided for three trustee members. And then we staggered the appointments, and then in 2011, we added two citizen members. And kind of what happened, from my point of view, is that a lot of these ordinances could be handled by the standing committees. And if there was a special need for a, to hold a, a meeting with the ordinance committee, you could certainly do that. But, you know, last time, when we were talking about this, there were two items that we wanted to pursue. One was the impact fee, and we sent it to Public Works. The other was the, the information involving the CDA. Sent that to, to CDA. So, again, I, I think that the way we're doing it now probably is the most economical, but if you want to go to and have an ordinance committee, that's fine, but just keep in mind, you need somebody who's going to potentially staff it, you're going to need somebody that comes up with the agendas, you need someone that comes up with the packets and, and the minutes. And honestly, during the last two years or so, I, I probably did all of that, because it just was trying to get somebody on a regular basis to do it, it was, it was hard. So, I wanted to make sure that you had a history of how it's been done, and I guess, I haven't seen that there's a problem, and I'd be curious if, if other people feel differently.
I've been here, I guess, obviously, the longest, and I remember a few ordinance committee meetings, we used to have them immediately before the village board meeting, so basically, we'd show up at like 5:30, have our meeting, then village board meeting, and a lot of times, it did seem like just an extra step in the process, because I think everybody on the board, in my mind, is intelligent enough to see if they have an ordinance that they don't like, they can just say, here's what I got, here's my proposed change, copy A, copy B, and send it to the board. Does that seem like a more simple process?
I had some questions about what currently happens with an ordinance, so for the current steps, it just, like with the tree height, that was just something that you became aware of, JJ and Sean.
Good point.
We need to mix up.
We're the same building.
It's the same hairdo.
So, you noticed that, that there was a discrepancy in our ordinance compared to what was actually happening, and so then you brought it to the Parks Committee?
Yes.
And then, so basically, you decided that it should be looked at to have this revision, and that Parks would look at it, and then it gets sent to the board. But, so then, did you check with Lee before you did that, or, like, before you took it to the Parks, or did Lee look at it after, like, the ordinance itself?
We, we researched other communities' ordinances when it came to that, and then to Parks, and then the board, and.
Okay. So, so, Lee checked it over afterwards, just to make sure all the legal stuff was correct in it, basically?
Lee wrote the ordinance, it just, all I had to do was say 10 feet or however, what it was.
14, yeah.
Yeah.
So, then, that makes me wonder what the ordinance review committee would do, like, are they going to go page by page through the ordinance, looking for something to do? Or would, like in this instance, Sean have to go to the ordinance review committee and say, hey, can you look at this? And then, then it would go to Parks afterward, and then to the board? Is that what the steps used to be?
Well, okay, just in terms of, to try to make an analogy that I hope makes sense, and that is, if you're going to have an ordinance committee, in some ways, you almost want to encourage the ordinance committee to say, okay, we're going to start on page one. And by the way, this, I've done that, up here, and that was really painful, and, but, you know, you kind of start on page one and work your way through. And, and that's, you know, so be it. What, I don't know, I think my idea and staff's idea has been that they come forward with issues that they're dealing with. And then they say, well, they take it to their committee, and the committee says, yeah, that's, I think that, that's worthy of making a change. And most of them have been pretty straightforward, you know, there's no magic in how you do it, it's just that I don't want to see us create an extra step that we don't need to, that's all.
Right, I agree. So, it just, like in this instance, and with Jeff's report about how much it costs per ordinance.
Right.
It just doesn't seem cost-effective to have an ordinance committee. I mean, if we have the room tax one already, and the, possibly the dog license, and the petition, I mean, we've already had.
I know, one other one, I can't.
See, we're looking at the emergency government ordinance, the traffic impact fees, we've had the tree height one already, so that's six. And we only budgeted $7,000 this year, and we're only in the beginning of February. So, if it is something that we want to do, I think we could look at it at budget time then to fund it better, but at this point, I think it's too late or too early.
I could see maybe the ordinance committee coming together, if that's what we choose, to set kind of a structure or flow for how ordinances actually are addressed. So, if, if the flow says that should go, if it's known to go through and appropriate for another committee to handle, that's, then it doesn't even go to ordinance, or the ordinance review committee, if that's the structure or flow they come up with, a decision tree. That'd be one thing I could see them doing. Another thing I could see them potentially doing is, is just coming up with a strategy overall. Our ordinances, a lot of them are seriously dated. So, then, maybe they say that, well, we really need to look at, because they are dated, and we can see where we got gaps. we can see where we got gaps, either in statute, or gaps in comparison to other municipalities, then we can take the approach of, we need to go to budget time, to your point, and say, in 2020, we think that we need to tackle 15 or 20 ordinances that may be on a prioritization basis, plus whatever else, you know, the board may come up with, another five or whatever that pop up for whatever reason. I could see them doing that. Otherwise, I could see us continuing modeling along as we do now, and it funnels through the various committees, and when they are brought up, either by a citizen, or by one of us that notice it, or by Lee, or Matt, or whomever. That's the only reason I could see the ordinances committee doing, setting up structure.
John, all I want, yeah, all I want is for it to be as simple as possible, and I figured that, just in talking to staff and talking to people around the committees, you guys are the ones who deal with them all the time. And JJ will say, you know, look, maybe I think the lawn mowing ordinance, or stripping the weed commissioner of his powers is an important thing to do.
Is that an option?
No. But, you know, then he goes, well, you know, that's not an issue for us. And then, you know, just getting that input from him and from his committee, so.
There's a good reason to have some sort of prioritization or decision tree established that the board approves, that then, you know, that this committee would, you know, develop and get to the board for consideration. Again, I'm not saying we need the ordinance committee back, but if they need direction on what to tackle, that'd be my first thing, that's, you know.
Well, it could, couldn't you have an agenda item at each committee level to look at an ordinance? At that point, then, 'cause currently, the ordinances are being looked at by each committee. So, if it's an agenda item, they keep looking at them more often, so then they won't get as outdated as currently. And they're the ones that deal with the ordinances.
Well, okay, again, but there's a cost to that, and the question is, is the board willing to undertake that cost?
Only if they change the ordinance, but if they're just looking at it to see how it, if it's still effective.
Okay. Yeah.
But, again, you're asking individual committees to look into this with no consistent strategy or direction from the overall board in doing this. That could be the approach that's taken, but again, the strategy should be agreed upon by all the committees, frankly, the board itself, and what do we have allowable for each year, budget-wise, et cetera. I mean, that's where I could see the value of a group of folks getting together and setting that, and then again, you know, getting consideration for the board. That's the only reason I see that as a goal.
The ordinance committee doesn't deal with, like, they, what staff are you gonna have at it? Because the staff is the one that actually deals with the ordinances and understands how they're impacting them, whereas the ordinance committee, okay, if it has two or three board members on it, but still has two citizen members on it that don't necessarily know how the ordinances impact either.
I realize that, but what I'm saying is that this group of folks would get together to set a strategy that then is agreed upon by the board in order to go forward with this. He doesn't, then you defer to your experts in the areas, your committees, et cetera. That's how you do a lot of things in, you know, in business or in family, you know, here's a family member that's the expert in this. That's what I'm saying. If you're gonna get the group together, this is the suggestion that they should, you know, approach that they should take. I'm not saying to get them together, but if the board wants to get them together, this would be something that they could tackle.
I don't understand what the ordinance committee will do over what the board would approve being done.
With the ordinance committee, I mean, I'm gonna equate it similar to like road repairs. The longer you wait, I mean, we're already sitting on five to seven ordinances that just popped up over the last probably three or four months. The largest expenses, if we either update or create a new ordinance, we're just gonna continue to, lack of a better term, kick the can down the road. Granted, we have to pay the citizen members, I think it's $20 or whatever a meeting, but if we're already looking at five to six ordinance amendments, or increase, you know, new ordinances, you know, there's our budget right there for the whole year, and that, you know, so I see the value of it, to Lee's point, I don't necessarily think we need Lee there, I don't, I mean, there's other committees, like Fire, for example, I'm responsible to get the agenda and the meeting minutes to pack it out, and we don't have staff there, so.
As long as everyone understands that by, at some point, the attorney gets involved.
Right.
And it's just a question of when, really, more than, and what's the most valuable use of the time.
Yep, and I would.
And also, I just wanted to make sure, I told you, John, I was at every one of those meetings, because Diane said I gotta have these meetings, and I thought.
And you were responsible for meeting minutes, which, when I joined the committee, I'm just like, why is our, why are we having our village attorneys spend time doing meeting minutes? So, I mean, and, you know, if an ordinance pertained to Parks or Rec, we would invite the Parks and Rec director to provide his or her two cents. Same thing with Public Works, you can rely on meeting per meeting based on the agenda, who you're gonna invite from the staff.
Then why don't just do it at their committees?
Because if we're looking at six or seven of them right now, I don't know if it's occurring at the committee level, for one reason or another.
But it did, the CDA did the room tax one.
That's, 'cause I brought it up.
The petition is going to the plan committee, the dog license would go to Parks.
I guess the first question is, do we wanna revive the ordinance committee, or do we wanna think we can bring the ordinances forward ourselves? Any thoughts?
How long have been since we've actually had the ordinance committee that's been actively?
Two years. I'd say two years, at least two years.
And in the last two years, we haven't had a lot of issues with not having an ordinance committee, and I guess I'm trying to run, I wonder why we feel that we need a ordinance committee now, and we haven't had to need it in the last couple of years.
My feeling is that the seven of us could probably figure out how to bring this stuff forward at this level and skip that step, if that makes sense?
Yep.
You know, I feel like it's gonna slow the process down, rather than expedite the process.
Just a couple of thoughts, in June, we'll redo the work on the board's priorities again, so, you know, we'll see where ordinances fall in that, and then a couple of months after, they'll be working on the budget, and, you know, we can see if, you know, what kind of amount gets allocated for ordinances and go from there.
Right, and we could do that without the ordinance committee at that point, 'cause board members could put the ordinances in the priorities, and then when it comes budget time, you say, okay, it's $1,000 to $1,500 in ordinance, how much do you wanna?
I mean, if staff's aware of a true issue, I mean, we're gonna bring it forward and bring it through the committees as is currently done. In an ideal world, obviously, all the ordinances would be up to date, perfect, but there isn't, there are ordinances, so if something isn't, you know, if something isn't perfect, there's no one to come at us for that, per se. So, it's just a matter of, you know, how important is it to the board, and then, you know, funding it as such, so.
Any other?
We've tried both ways, both ways have worked, we just wanna know what your direction is now.
I guess how we make a motion, we'd have is, on what through committees, bring it to the board level.
Would you be okay with the second, on the condition that you do that, if anybody wants an ordinance changed, do it at the June prioritization memo that Matt was talking about, if they have something, what I mean?
Prioritization of.
Matt was talking about an ordinance, or a memo that we identify our priorities, or something.
Well, I was just saying, in general, the high-level prioritization process at the board did last year.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, assuming the board would wanna do that again, to update overall priorities, and then we would see where, are updating ordinances fifth in the priority list, are they 10th, are they 1? And then, that's kinda taken into account during budget time.
Starts with.
And if it's high up, then we should fund ordinances more.
Work up that list, but still follow it through the different committees.
Right.
But if that ordinance, how it pertains to, I don't have any issue with that, no. I mean, that's, yeah.
Okay.
I add that to it, that we would go by the priority list.
Okay, and not restart the ordinance committee?
Not.
Not restart the ordinance committee?
No, all I can say is, leave it as is, not restart the ordinance committee.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other discussion? A motion that's second, cannot restart the ordinance committee at this point, just go through the prioritization process. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
John, I do wanna tell you that I appreciate you bringing up the minutes thing, 'cause that was a, those were always free, and they always seemed to have to be done the night of the committee meeting, so.
We've all done that.
All right, item 10C, discuss and consider emergency management plan, emergency government committee, emergency government director, and/or revising the current emergency government ordinance. Everybody should have a, a fork, handout here.
So, I was gonna bring this up at the joint meeting, but since we didn't meet, I figured that the village board should talk about it, because I am concerned that our ordinance is not really being, it's not up to date, I guess, as to what the committee's doing. I think we do need to have an emergency plan in place, or at least being worked on, so I thought we should discuss and figure out how we're proceeding.
Yeah, I guess I agree with you that it should be talked as a group, the town, and those, considered a town and village committee. For us to start making changes, review things, without their knowledge or participation, may not send quite the right message to them.
Okay, but this is our village ordinance, so it's kinda, we shouldn't have to wait for the town to do our ordinance.
Well, our ordinance is kind of entwined with theirs.
Yeah, it's basically the same, word for word, except for town and village.
What I would ask, and Troy knows this, I've been banging on it for a couple of months, is to get Mike and the town people to just read the ordinance, and I mean, if you have to, take your scissors and cut it apart, because it seems to say one thing, but I think it actually says something different. And I think you have to, it's unclear to me how the emergency director would work, and who should be the emergency director. Under the current ordinance, if we had a disaster tonight, then Mike is the chair, or is the chair of emergency government, and he would be the emergency director. So then, he would be telling our police chief and our people what to do. That's what the words say. Now, that may not be what they mean.
Yeah, I think, I mean, just my understanding is the emergency government committee is more of a resource, they're not directing, you know, the police, you know, the police department, or the fire department, they're there, you know, receiving phone calls, saying they need water, or they need supplies.
They're there to assist with whatever is going on in the community as an emergency, you know, we're, as you say, gathering water trucks, if there's water trucks needed, or they need floodlights, or, you know, nightlights, or stuff, we're not calling chief labor and saying, hey, we've got this going on, you need to come over here.
But there's no plan saying that, that that's what's gonna be done, or who's gonna be doing it, or who's part of the group that's gonna be doing that, or how you're gonna get those resources.
Is there an emergency government plan still in place?
No, the board never approved it.
Is there a plan at the committee level?
There's a draft plan, but there has been no finalized plan.
Yep. So that, I mean, if there's a plan, what I'd like to see is compare it to, you know, what is the county request, and what makes sense for the village and the town, 'cause I know there was one that existed, I actually worked on it a while back, and my frustration was, after four months, I couldn't get the town and the village to approve it, 'cause I knew that was a step, and I fully agree with Melissa, so.
There's many things that are outdated, and starting with contacts, I mean, they should have, I think Diane Reubenbeck's contact information, as an example.
Yep.
So, there are many things that need to be updated, I think that the basics of the plan are pretty good, and even Dane County and the state have looked at it and said, again, we're far ahead of other communities.
Yep.
We're ready for the emergency that never happens.
So, and we use that plan to actually, for the simulations, correct? The tabletop exercises, we've done two, three of those in the last.
Yeah.
Year and a half or so, and so we.
No, we've done one in the past year, maybe.
No, we did one at Hyde, Hyde rate.
Yeah, that was, that was.
And then we did one involving the schools.
And we're working on one doing with, one with landmark.
One with landmark. So, I said, over a year and a half or so, maybe it's been a little longer than that.
I'd say so, within the last two years, 'cause I.
Yeah.
So, it seems to me, I'm not in the committee anymore, but it seems to me, having this plan is pretty high priority, so what's being discussed?
We're not on a plan.
And there is a plan, it's just it's.
Or we're working on.
It's kind of a work in progress, I guess.
It's not being worked on, though. The plan was from 2014, and it's not looked at at the committee level at all. I didn't even know about it until I just happened to send, had an email, and then you said, oh yeah, we have this plan. But, it's from 2014, so I think that it's important that our emergency government committee is actually working on it, and it's great if you guys all know what you're supposed to do, but what if most of you guys are gone when an emergency happens, anyway? So I don't feel like we're as prepared as we should be.
I could put it on next month's agenda, I don't have any issues with it, I don't disagree with any of it, but I'm not sure what ordinances need to change at this point.
Who becomes the emergency government director? Who is the emergency government director?
The chair of the committee.
Right.
Right.
That's my concern.
And if a town person was the chair of the committee and something happened here, we wouldn't want them as our spokesman anymore than I would think they would want one of our people as their spokesman.
And again, that, you know, I mean, when I brought this up, it's like, whoa, what do you have to stick your big nose in for? Well, okay, fine, just read it and tell me what it says, and that's all I'm asking, is for people to just take a look at the language and see if you're comfortable with it, because right now, I don't know, well, Matt's right, I mean, the emergency government director is the chair of the committee, but I don't think that was the intent.
And, you know, to have the fire chief as the, what's the term we wanna use?
Emergency government director.
Yeah, you know, the likelihood is that that individual's gonna be at the emergency site, so what is, what are they gonna do, other than handle the emergency site onsite? They're not gonna be in the room, making phone calls to United Rentals and saying, hey, we need 10 spotlights, we need whatever, call Houston, say, hey, we need, do you have a water truck we can use? You know, that kinda stuff. He's not gonna be there to do that, he's not gonna be there to direct, it's all gonna happen in the room.
But isn't he or she going to direct people to take care of those jobs? Isn't that what the emergency government director is supposed to be doing?
We're not directing anybody, doing anything other than gathering, assisting in what supplies they may not have.
Maybe that's what needs to be spelled out.
That's what I mean, yeah, yeah. I think it's just the language that there's a concern with.
Sounds practically, by the simulations and what the committee members are hearing, is that, but it's clear that it's not spelled out, as Melissa brought up, in the current documents.
The municipalities have it, it's fire chief or a police chief is in that position.
Right. Chief labor, anything you can add, like being the default emergency government director, is that something in your experience that you've seen, having a police chief do that?
It's generally a city manager, fire department, person, not necessarily a chief, but it's not usually in the police department, unless it's a large police department like Madison, I think.
Okay.
That's the way they do it.
So, it sounds like we need to try to get the plan finalized, approved, and get the wording, so it's.
So, it's actually implementing what you want implemented?
Yeah.
Right, and we need to designate a director for the village, who will act in that for the S and D, I guess.
And previously, the board had decided to have the fire chief be that person, and that was something that the chair of the emergency government committee said he would think about.
That was a while back.
Yeah, like in the summer.
Okay, so I guess, if the emergency government committee, if they're okay with the fire chief being the emergency government director.
Doesn't matter what I'm okay with, if the committee's okay with.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, maybe.
There's resistance with the fire chief, and the fact is, they don't understand why there needs to be someone in that role, especially someone that's gonna be onsite on an emergency, calling us, saying. on the emergency, calling us, saying what assistance they might need.
Right, I think it's more of a statutory requirement more than.
Well, well, it's not, it's an ordinance requirement. And if you wanna change it, we should. I think that there's just a gap between what we kinda want it to say and what it actually says. And if we're gonna leave the language the way it is, then we gotta change what we're doing.
Yeah.
And that's why I, you know, when she had it on the agenda, I believe it should be on an agenda item on the joint town and village, so that we get a unified director from both parties in the room at the same time. Not us going to the committee and saying, well, the village wants to do this, and the town says, well, I wanna do this, and there's no unity there, right?
Well, and full disclosure, all I've said to Chris is, would you read the ordinance for me? And just see what you think it says. And I do think that there's kind of a gap there.
But Chris isn't on the committee, like he goes to it, but he's not on the committee.
Well, I figured if I started with him, it was, the word would get, the word would get out some.
But I guess it should still stay on the town-village agenda.
Yep.
Presumably the 28th.
Yep, I'll have it as an agenda item for a joint meeting.
Right, it can still stay on there, but in the meantime, we, but if an emergency happens, like we're, the current chair of the emergency government committee could be in charge of the village.
Right. I mean, the only thing in recent memory I can think of is, I think, was it JJ? Two years ago, we had some flooding over on the east side, and I got a call from you because you couldn't get ahold of, I don't remember if you couldn't get ahold of, but you had a call from me and I got ahold of somebody else, and we got some sand and stuff.
Can I ask a favor, if it's gonna be an agenda item, can we put the current plan as a link or a hyperlink so we can actually review it before the meeting?
Yeah, can you do that?
Yeah.
Put that as a link?
Okay. Good idea, John, thanks Melissa.
All right, so I guess a motion would be to put it on the joint town-village meeting to clarify it, and to put a hyperlink on our packet so we have it to review, right?
Okay, please. I'll second that.
Okay? Motion and second to put the emergency management plan on the next joint town-village meeting, and a hyperlink in our packet for review. Any other discussion?
So, but we don't know when the next joint meeting's going to be.
Hopefully it's gonna be the 28th, but.
But that's when the candidate form's gonna be.
Yep, we're gonna, I'll have to.
So we don't have necessarily a set meeting coming up with the town at this point.
That's gonna be some back and forth meetings between I own myself and I'll let everybody know the next joint, or our next board meeting.
The next emergency government committee meeting is this Thursday or so.
Yeah, it's not gonna. All right.
So because we have a joint committee meeting with the town, which I think is great, in the meantime, things aren't being done for the village, and that concerns me.
What do you think the best way is to, I mean, wanna try to do it at this kind of meeting? To talk to?
At emergency government?
Yeah.
Well, there is an agenda item about the ordinance on there, but I can't go to that meeting.
Okay, I might be able to go to that. And I'll put it on the joint board meeting, and we'll hopefully work out a date for the joint meeting. I mean, that's, soon as we can get it, I guess. All right, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, the motion passes.
I don't feel that motion really addressed the concerns, but we'll start there, I guess.
I agree, we gotta start somewhere. All right, along enforcement, oh, reports from village boards, commissions, and committees. I was not able to make the last.
Just cancel, we didn't have a forum.
We didn't have a forum, okay.
Just to ensure it was a forum.
All right. Then Parks, Res, and Forest Street, we've got a couple items.
First one, some information in your packet about, it's the third time now we've talked about zoozord and being able to suspend the ordinance allowing animals pets in the park for July 3rd from noon until 4:00 at North One Park. Second, for a motion to suspend an ordinance for four hours to allow zoozord, and again, Dane County Library and the Bookmobile that presents this.
And we've done that multiple times in the past, yeah.
Yep.
How did it go over last year?
Great, we had fifty-some kids there with some hissing things and stuff.
I'll make a motion then to suspend the ordinance for the July 3rd.
Okay. Second, okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the ordinance, and for the purposes of the zoozord event, any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Then you have another one about park closing hours.
Yep, we're creating a new program called the Family Outdoor Campout. We're looking to do that on August 10th at Community Park, so right in John's backyard. Just where we, and we allow up to twenty families to come in. We're gonna do, just run a program pretty much all day where there's smores and possibly a campfire and kickball and softball, and just being able to suspend the ordinance so that folks are allowed to be in the park basically all night long until about eight or nine in the morning on the following day with a possible rain date of August 17th.
Comments or questions?
One thing, if I may, one thing we will do is contact all of the neighbors surrounding the park and just let them know that this is acceptable, that the board has approved this, and that there will be, there's not gonna be a rock band or anything going on.
Right, and that could be on the village website as well, probably.
Correct.
I'll make a question with the park closing hours for August 10th, the rain date of August 17th.
I'll second.
The, and then.
Sorry. Sorry, Kim.
We have a motion and a second.
What did the committee think of this?
They liked it.
Especially because it was near John's house, John's house is right on the park.
Do I too?
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve suspending the ordinance 230-3 for the park closing hours, August 10th, or the rain date of August 17th. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. And number C, stewardship, stewardship conversion grant.
It was about seven point two acres of land that the village had sold to the rugby club in about 2007. And in John's memo to the board, it indicates the time that the entire thirty-five acre parcel was purchased, the village used a DNR stewardship land acquisition grant. And that requires that if you, you know, sell off to a private entity part of the land, that you would create a new public space of equal value. So it may be seven, eight, nine, or six acres. That part doesn't matter, but the appraised value of whatever that's worth is what you have to offset with your lands. The village did look into that back in '07 and had an area that the DNR said would be fine. Village was looking at a larger acquisition at the time. That would've been way more than either to offset that. But that deal had fallen through. And then, just today, when you were presented about the Miracle League that would be using the area in that location, about, under a half acre, but about a half acre area, that's another area where more than fifty percent of the time it would be in some sort of private ties use. We talked to the DNR, and the good thing that has come up is that you can offset that value with your capital plan for parks. So they have to be projects that are, that would meet stewardship today, so passive recreation. So like a spray park would be active recreation, it wouldn't qualify. They wouldn't get you a grant for that. But they would consider a shelter and bathroom area as part of supporting passive recreation. So, you know, the area where we talked about the bathrooms concession slash shelter area, I believe, talking to them, that they said that would qualify. So, you know, if that was a $400,000 structure and the land appraisal came in under $200,000, the DNR stewardship would fund, say, half that facility, so that would be able to be utilized to withdraw those lands from stewardship for something you already have planned anyhow. So we would like to proceed with that with them. And we presented this to the Parks Committee, and they recommended proceeding with an appraisal. And the DNR requires that you get an appraiser that follows their rules as far as separating out facilities and land. And you wanna have that done anyhow, because you don't wanna have that overvalued on with what improvements rugby, for instance, put in out there. So we did get John Rowling, an appraiser, who is doing an appraisal in the Cottage Grove area in February, indicated he would appraise the infield area that could be for the Miracle League for $1,000. He'd do the appraisal of the seven acres of rugby club for $3,000. So that's what Parks put forward, was the recommendation to proceed with the appraiser. Once we have that, then we can take that to the DNR, compare that to the capital project, and start the transition to get this, you know, liability off the books.
Mike, how much was, will he do the seven acres for?
$3,000.
I'm just curious now, for the Miracle League ball field, I thought that their use of it is gonna allow people to our program to use of it. I mean, they're, they're not, they're using it three nights a week. Are we going to be using it much more than that?
We could, we could be, depending on the usage that they want, but the facility itself is locked. It's fenced and locked because of the surface material and just not wanting folks in there with bikes or things like that that could possibly damage that board in place stuff. So that's where the stewardship grant comes into play and says it has to be open, you know, eighty or ninety percent of the time.
But we can offset it with the passive shelter. One of the things that came out, Bill told the Parks Committee, didn't tell us, was that, you know, he has had interest for other communities, of course. He presented to all the Parks directors, and he's gotta pick one. And the forest was very interested, but with their, with their proposal, supplying land, there's no bathrooms adjacent to it. We don't have bathrooms either, but at least we have a plan to build bathrooms. So if we aren't going to build the bathrooms, we can let them, so they can pursue other alternatives, but. Anyway, the bathrooms are a big part of the Miracle League plan as well.
I guess I'm trying to wrap my arm around, why are we appraising now if Splash Park hasn't been approved as an actual real life? We're doing this, nor has a ball field. Why are we doing it now till those are approved?
It would be the shelter, because the Splash Park.
The shelter hasn't been approved either.
No, but, but any, any passive recreation can offset this. We've gotta offset it, right?
Yeah.
Otherwise, that's just, has to happen, because we sold the land off, now we've gotta offset it. And we can do it with passive recreation.
Well, we have to offset it, but those items aren't approved. So we can't say for a hundred percent sure that we're gonna actually have a splash park or a shelter.
The bike trail, I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, the other item you have that could be used for passive recreation would be the glacial trail on that bike path. And that has the cap grant supporting it. The DNR had so many applications for stewardship, they actually rejected that. But they could use that as well as an offset. So I was just pointing out some of the things that they put off, so. The other thing is, they were looking for us to get this done in eighteen months. In a former letter back in probably 2008, from the DNR, they put no timeline on it. And they, the new staff at the DNR saying, well, we had a temporary period back then, and, you know, we expect it done in eighteen months, but.
We got a timeline then. So you have a timeline, we got, the clock is ticking now, we have to figure this out.
We have a timeline, but I'm concerned if we're gonna spend money on some things that may not happen. It may not be that offset we're looking for, and so.
Correct. I don't know what the appraisers are gonna come in and just value per acre of land in a part of, what that comes in at. I think that would be one thing. Trail itself, it can exceed, I think, to that value.
What about the rest of the trail that's not only in that, but the rest of the trail that we're doing, bike path? Would that be able to be included in that appraisal?
Yeah, it's not really, it's not really the fact that it's on the land. They would, they would look at your capital plan for the village. So that's, that's a good thing. And so it would be that whole larger amount that we were looking at with the trail, for instance.
So, why, why this appraiser? I mean, he's gonna be here in February, he specializes in this, is that?
Yeah, I mean, we, so, we do land acquisition negotiations, but we don't do appraisals. And so we're always working with different appraisers out there, and he's the one that, it looked like his value was a thousand lower than what I've seen other appraisers come in at, and he's doing that because he says it's in the area, so.
Okay, and he, he does this type of appraisal too as well?
Yeah, it's like a full report appraisal that the DNR needs.
Yeah.
And was the land appraised back in 2007, or is that what we're trying to get to now that we're on the clock?
It was parted with, I think, for some price or.
John, I think it was appraised, and I asked Mike if I needed to find that, and apparently this is supposed to be separate from that, but I'd be happy to clarify that.
Current firm, firm argument.
And approval from the DNR too.
Where would the funds come from, a Parks Recreation Budget?
For the appraisal, you mean?
For the appraisal, yeah. The committee voted to take out a park development.
It's what?
The committee voted to take it out of park development.
Okay? Any other questions for Mike or Sean?
I'm making a motion to approve spending the $4,000 out of park development for the appraisal of the seven plus acres.
A second.
Motion and second to approve the appraisal at Bakken Park, any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Do you have to approve the stewardship conversion grant too?
That'll be down the road once we figure out what the appraised value of the land is.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be admin work with the DNR staff. On that, we're gonna get them the appraisal and, you know, and the project values, and I think that's, that's the limits of our work that's necessary to do this, but they'll come up with an agreement to take it off.
Okay, 'cause it's on our agenda, so should.
Said, discuss and consider, so we can table it.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and second to table item C, the stewardship conversion.
Can we just hear if they say that's what they want us to do?
Oh, you want us to table it till you bring it back?
But it's, yeah, it's not a, it's not a grant. Yeah, I guess it's the idea of doing the conversion grants.
Oh.
Okay.
So.
What's our alternative? There's an alternative.
I'm fine with doing the conversion that Mike was talking about.
Okay, so I think we're just doing the appraisal, Mike.
To get the process started.
To get the process started, and see if we can.
We really go forward from there.
Take it off the table?
Yeah.
All right.
Untabled. Excited.
All right, break this down to Network Land Management Monitoring Committee.
We met on the 28th Monday. It was John Russell, myself, and Steve, and Chris Hampton. And we just basically took, we were starting faster than we ever been done, five or six minutes. Because all it was was just reviewing the invoice, and it was red and lime with everything that's typical. Set our next meeting for two months from then.
28th.
Mark 28th.
Fire Department Committee.
All right, Joint Fire Department.
All right, Joint Fire Department, January 28th. All members were present. The contract with Pleasant Springs is all signed. So, that, that was an update provided. This has been on the agenda probably since I've been on the committee and the computer network infrastructure in the building. So, the committee directed the fire chief to work with the EMS chief to come up with some alternatives, whether it's spectrum or CFTDS is actually providing quotes. Because I think spectrum currently provides, get some quotes and report back at the next meeting. We did have a proposal for Schindler to put something like a Wi-Fi booster in the elevators, but I don't think that would cover the full spectrum of the building to include the Bay Area, which is a concern. So, we should have an update at the next meeting. So, discuss and consider acquiring a shipping container for training purposes. It was tabled, the fire department plans to pay for it, and we just wanted to get assurance that the adjacent landowner was, was open to it. They're going to use it for controlled burns, they're able to stay right on site. We did talk about safety with soccer fields nearby and there's, there's a way to actually secure it so kids are, people can't get in there. And as part of the training plan, they typically have someone in charge as well as like a safety officer to make sure that no one comes up on the control burn.
Just one other note, other, other communities do this as well. So, Middleton has one on their, one of their sites. Semperi does the same thing. So, it's just a, it's a best practice for fire safety and to get the, you know, the staff up par, as far as that goes, rather than waiting for a house that needs to be burned down or whatever to do that.
Or spend any money to go to trainings offsite.
Yeah, so it keeps the firefighters in the community versus going to Semperi or Madison. Nope, that's, that's good. We have to repair the two north walk-in doors that pass, it's just, they're old. Let me see here. The next item is discuss and consider, there's a moisture problem with compressors for the truck, airlines, rebuild kits, $288. And then we need five pieces to eliminate the moisture problem. And the committee authorized fire chief to spend up to $1,500 to make that repair. Once again, it's just older equipment that needs updating. Chief's report, there's twenty five, twenty-nine members, five officers, twenty-two firefighters. There's two in training and five officers that are qualified to begin the training to become a fire officer. And the chief actually, and the department, I apologize, it wasn't part of the packet, came in after business hours on Friday, so it didn't make the agenda packet. But they, they provided a, an overview on the end of year, call summary. They can break it down a number of different ways, like where are their calls, Pleasant Springs, the town, the village, things of that nature. So, providing hard copies of that. And it was a good end of year report. Calls are up, responses are up. Part of it had to do with the interstate reconstruction, but it's been fairly quiet the last couple of months, once they reduced it down from 70 miles an hour to 55 miles an hour. And then there's a comparison from 2017 to 2018. So, that's, that's information available from the fire department. And if there's any other items that you'd like to see with this report, they've offered that up as well. The next meeting is going to be March 28th. And I was approached by a member of the fire department, another ordinance, potentially is going to be on the next committee agenda regarding the number of building inspections. State law requires two, but they also require, allow for municipalities to reduce that down to one. Obviously, if they don't pass, they would come back for a reinspection. But currently, I think it was close to 700 building inspections last year that they conducted. It's about two per day if you're working the weekends as well, so. Summit has passed all fire inspections and they're on schedule to open. And that's all I have for that committee.
John, just a question. When they talk about responders and their status.
Yep.
Some say canceled.
Yep.
What, what triggers that to be canceled?
Whether it's a, it's a law enforcement call and they don't need the, the fire department there.
She said sometimes they just call it off.
Yeah.
They, somebody calls for emergency or something and it's called off.
Starts at the 911 center.
Yep.
By the time they get auto page, by the time they get down here, they get told, never mind.
Just curious.
Yep.
Okay. All right, reports from village officers. Troy had an item requesting staff time to research and compile a report of commercial versus residential assessment values from surrounding municipalities in Bingham.
Yeah, Matt, that's great help. I guess the other thing I think is manufacturing, we could add manufacturing, but I guess the whole purpose is I'd like to see what other communities are doing compared to all the community in residential growth, commercial growth, and manufacturing growth. Are we doing as well as the labing areas?
The manufacturing is all in there.
Yeah, that he sent it.
It is, okay, so there's, there's not a separate breakup from manufacturing?
We could, I just, I just figured that with the exercise, it was just to see like business in general versus residential.
So, like, commercial is included in manufacturing and residential?
Yeah.
I didn't know if it was or not.
Yeah, all commercial, office, industrial, every, every type into one.
But I think if you gather the information, see how we compare other communities and county.
Why? I guess I don't understand what that is.
Why?
Why, why, why would that be, let me give us a reason.
Well, then the question becomes, why is our residential growth more or less than other communities? Why is our commercial growth more or less?
Pretty much less right now. Less.
You have less, less, less.
Then you start asking, why is that? I guess that's, if you know the information, then you can start asking educated questions.
I just want to make sure we're using Matt's time.
We know it's less without looking at the numbers.
But how can it be compared? Like, we're a different village than, like, McFarland, they have different resources. They didn't have a big boom maybe in the 90s like we did, where we had all this residential. And now we're trying to catch up with the business. And we don't have many houses for sale, so, like, we can't grow our residential, but we can't grow our business because we don't have more residential. So, comparing the two, I think, doesn't help at all. Like, because obviously we have more houses, more residential than commercial right now. And we're not going to get more businesses in until we start doing more residential because there's nowhere for the workers to live here. Nobody, most people probably wouldn't commute from Madison to Cottage Grove. And if they do, why wouldn't they want to live here, too? So, we got, even though we have a lot of residential currently, that doesn't mean we should just stop and only focus on business. In addition, the fact that a lot of our businesses are now going to be in TIDS doesn't help our taxes right now because the tax money's stuck in the TIDS and for 20 years. So, we need to get more residential so that we can help our tax base. So, I don't.
Do you have any business to take the pressure off residential?
I guess, he's just asking for the data.
I'm just asking for data. I'm just asking, I just want to see how we compare.
Well, and you could ask the other municipalities for it, too. I just don't understand how it will help us to know that.
How much, how much time do you think this is like?
That's the other question.
Couple hours.
I mean, that's fine, it sounds to me like it's on air for two hours. It sounds to me like we might find somebody like going to real estate brokerage firm probably has some source that's can find that.
Just a, just a couple of thoughts. I don't know if, you know, we had, what was it, seven years pretty quickly on hand. I don't know if I'll be able to get seven years from everybody, so it might be three or four, something like that. And then also, also need to consider that, you know, the, right now, we're at the 89% assessment, you know, some might be over 100, so that factors into that as well. But we still.
They don't equalize values? They're not talking, they're talking about assessed values here in this case?
These are assessed values, there's a sense, okay.
All right. I, I guess what struck out to me is, is the ratio, I thought that we, the ratio of residential and business growth is, it hasn't changed much in the seven years that you did it. And I just really curious as to are other communities seeing, are they seeing higher growth in residential with that higher growth that they bring in business the next year, the next year after that? I don't know without numbers.
Seems kind of worthwhile just to see what data's there. Then we can ask better questions.
Yeah, I guess it only takes a couple hours, I guess.
I only asked Troy to put it on, on here because, I sent you guys an email, just my rule of thumb. I could do it differently, but I just figured an hour is a reasonable amount of time for information requests, and it's going to be much, you know, more than that, just to be fair to everybody and transparent to have you guys decide.
Okay. Can I make a motion, though?
If everybody's okay with an hour.
I'll make a motion to approve the staff time to researching public report.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the staff time for a couple hours of.
So, what if it goes over two hours then? Or what if it, I mean.
You're not going to bill us, sorry. I'll get it done.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Matt, this isn't a priority, this is tomorrow, we're losing something else when you have time.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. James, anything?
No, we're worked.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate that letter that was read earlier. Sarah.
Sarah, sorry.
Thank you for writing that letter. Very much agree with it, and I think we can do as good on this village board to remember who we represent. So, thank you, appreciate that.
All right, Melissa?
I was, one thing is, for the future agenda, well, on our next agenda, would everybody be okay with adding when meetings are, like, a list of committee meetings for the next two weeks before the next board meeting, just so that it's all in one space?
You mean, putting it on?
Like, on the agenda, like, at the end of it, I guess, or something, so that it's just all. You can map out your calendars so that you know when, like, when Law Enforcement Committee is or when.
It's on your, it's on the website. It's also on, if you go into Outlook in the calendar, you have access to the calendar as well.
Right. I know, I do, I, I know how to, but as far as other, right, then other people would know when we have meetings.
Okay, so it'd be posted on the agenda that's posted on the website?
Like, upcoming meetings or whatever?
Like, just on the agenda. That's okay, but.
Is that fine?
Yeah, the only thing I would caution, I mean, we certainly can, but if cancellations come up.
Right.
You know, it becomes a trail and.
You have somebody showing up and the meeting's canceled.
Yeah, but I mean, we certainly can, if it's nice to be added.
All right.
Do you like a motion?
If it's something you can just do easily, I don't think you need a motion.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, John Russell, the review and discuss the draft shady grove meeting agenda.
Should have been part of your packets.
Yep.
I've met with the attorney from the developer, I've met with a couple neighbors, and everyone's in agreement with the flow of the meeting. You know, you conduct a meeting to actually share information, so I just put general timelines on there. You know, if we're done less than two hours, I don't think anyone's going to be upset. We'll try to keep it to two hours because I think any meeting that lasts longer than two hours, you start losing people.
I will say it's set to, too, so keep people in the eyes, exit because it wasn't part of the package.
Sure. Yeah, I, I have, I think the agenda should be more generic because I have some concerns of, like, is, I guess we can start with your list of concerns and solutions. Is this from you or the developer or?
These are, these are all items I've ever received, either an email or phone calls with concerned residents.
Okay.
And you said the developer looked at this and?
Yep.
Okay.
I guess my impression was when they were here, the result, I mean, is this just be more of a, I'd call it a round table, just people getting together and discussing. I, I kind of like what Melissa has here, is it seems a little less formal and maybe less intimidating for some folks to speak. That's just my opinion.
Yeah.
And I understand that we want to keep things moving, too, but, you know, again, we're citizens, they're saying to the developers, here are the things that we see as issues, here's what we think you might be able to do, and they, they take those back and come up with a different plan. It's, I guess that's what I recall from the meeting and.
Yep. And I think at the last meeting, I mean, Jim had asked for, for the meeting minutes, you know, some sort of structure.
Yeah.
I volunteered to facilitate. And rather than have one person come up and talk about, you know, the park size and location, and then the next person talk about preserving the woodlands and jumping around, I was going to try to keep them on topic until everyone's done talking about item one. And we'll just, you know, make notes and have the discussion, just to kind of keep the flow on topic.
Because I, I guess I wouldn't anticipate, I don't know, but, you know, I just can't imagine it's going to be like the other meetings we've had where someone's going to stand up there for three minutes and rehash the same thing. I don't see that happening.
Correct.
I think that's already happened.
Yep.
You know?
Yep.
I think it's just what, what can we do to resolve the park? What can we do to resolve transportation? You know, those, those items, really. What are, what are some ideas?
Yep.
I wanted to, I apologize, I will not be able to attend the meeting, but I do, I do, for my two cents, I think structure will help try to build consensus so that we don't have, so we have less conflict. Now, we're going to get rid of conflict, right?
Yep, no. And we're not talking about a two years from now as well, so.
John, just one suggestion is that if you can make clear when the meeting starts that this is kind of an advisory group for what we're doing here, and they, you can't really make any final decisions.
Yep.
And that decisions have to come back to plan commission and that village board.
I like the language that Melissa has in the bottom of her agenda. I mean, I think.
Yeah, with a three-minute time limit.
That's part of mine as well, but, you know, that, you know, possible quorum's going to be there, no action's going to be taken.
Yep.
John, I'm just curious, the conversations that you had with the developer, I know they were kind of on the fence of whether to do any more work on the plat. Are they going to bring anything into that meeting or?
I don't believe so.
We basically told them not to, then.
Yeah, I think we advised them that.
Get the community input, and then you guys take that back and come back at that point.
Redraw it, yeah, not to have to spend money.
Yeah, yeah, why, why spend more money and that kind of thing?
I just was curious.
Yep.
And would you like staff to be there?
I don't think it's necessary, I don't know. But what do you think?
I don't think it's necessary either, but I mean, just.
I think they're welcome to be there.
It's a public meeting, I mean, it's just a public forum. I, I don't see the need for staff.
And you're okay with that?
Unless, unless you want.
Hopefully, the developer comes away with a, a understanding of how to, to get this then through, you know? And then they'll present to staff.
Something like we're palatable.
Because it's not, it's not your job to make it palatable, it's your job to accept what they.
Your job to make sure.
Because of the preparation standpoint, I think, you know, Aaron, Aaron and I will likely be there, but I just want to make sure, you know, if we don't, if we don't have a role that's, that's great, we need to listen.
Well, yeah, you know, I don't think it would hurt.
And so, yeah, I just, I mean.
What do you think, John? I mean, should they be there or should they not be?
I would recommend Matt at a minimum, and if Matt and Aaron could be there, just so they hear what.
Everybody's here?
You know, everyone's, at least I'm.
We have a cable staff coming to record it.
Yep, and so the setup, you know, I'm hoping for is to have chairs focused that way. The developer gets a 15-minute overview, and then we can just kind of take notes on each of the topics up there, come to some consensus, but not have the tables with name tags. I mean, we're just going to be there as normal citizens facilitating the meeting. So, I was kind of hoping that I could come in a day of to help you set up, too, as well, but just focus that way, so it's, it's less formal than, than this.
Again, just something to feel a little less formal, like, to make people feel comfortable.
Sure.
Just a discussion.
I, I feel like we already know all of their concerns, and I feel like the developer did address all of them, so I don't understand how it's going to come to some consensus or how you can come to a consensus at this meeting because the developer had already addressed their concerns in their first plat that was approved.
The problem is some of the concerns conflict, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's part of the problem, so that we want to work through the issues to try to say, okay, these conflict, and then try to, try to build a consensus. That's the objective, right?
And because the time has lapsed too far, they have to come back and do a new preliminary plat, final plat anyways.
Is that accurate?
Yeah, yeah.
How is it lapsed too far?
We just had it in the first part of November last year, and we didn't have it in today coming. Should be the way they're having to resubmit and go through the whole process.
Hopefully a lot quicker, if you have consensus.
Yeah.
There's never any consensus.
I think, I think this meeting is to prioritize the issues and say, those are my must-haves, developer, those are my must-haves, whatever, you know, the citizen group, that's its group, and if you can tie, if you can, with the new plat, you can knock off those types of things, the rest of them, oh, those are, those are gonna, I'm gonna have to live with. I mean, there are some that don't want the development at all.
Yeah, few.
Few.
The reality is, it's gonna happen.
It's gonna happen.
We need to accept that. It just may not happen in its current state, it may happen with a few minor changes, major changes, whatever, you know, but it's gonna happen, yeah.
Improvements. We hope improvements.
Okay.
Well, I, I think it would be an okay thing to take some of what John's got here, I definitely like the words, the verbiage at the bottom, Melissa's gonna like to see that.
You mean, the forums stuff, like? Yeah, I think we probably pretty much have to have that in there anyway, because.
Well, not only that, just the information.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not an official meeting, nobody's voting on anything, but it's.
I agree with Troy, I definitely like the idea of leaving it more of an open forum.
All right. Anything else on that?
So how are you going to have people come to a consensus? Like, what's gonna be the, how are you gonna get to that point?
You can kinda tell by the way the dialogue goes, I mean, we can certainly take votes, or, I mean, however we do it, but you can tell how the dialogue's going, and you look out to the person to your right or left, and if they're shaking their head yes, I mean, I'm not, I'm just facilitating the meeting, I'm not steering anyone towards a decision, I mean.
You're not trying to scare it one way or the other, you're just trying to, trying to get them together to, to have unity, basically.
Correct.
If they don't reach a consensus and everything, then they don't.
Then it's up to the seven of us to take the next step.
But will it end at that point? Like, are we gonna be here, here from now, doing the same thing, because consensus wasn't reached and so on?
I hope not, the developers jumped through more hoops than we've ever made another developer jump through already.
Yeah, exactly. I, I, like, I'm glad we're having the meeting, but I feel like it.
It's actually warranted to have this meeting, right? I mean.
They've already had the required meeting.
Well, they already have.
This is additional, this is another hoop we can jump through.
Another hoop to go through.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
If they what?
They're changing the plat.
I see, okay.
All right. Well, it'll be interesting to see how it goes, I hope, and I'll make it, most of us, again. All right, John Williams?
No report.
Okay. I have a couple items.
But, I'm sorry, did we, do we have to vote on an agenda, or?
No, I don't think so. I mean, it's.
It's just gonna be whatever.
John's gonna facilitate it, and in my mind, the developer's gonna give the introduction anyway, and.
Well, I wanted to be clear that, that any, any, like, whatever John says is not my opinion necessarily, advice for.
Right, we're gonna.
Melissa, if you wanna make a motion, that's fine, I think John's already indicated he's gonna cheap, put, kind of incorporate some language, and if you wanna make a motion, you can see if the board.
Do you use your language that's on the bottom of your agenda to put on what John has?
Well, I would, I'm still concerned about your list of issues as well, 'cause what if it, what if those aren't all of them, what if other people bring up other ones, and as far as the three minutes, like, are you gonna have a timer, like, it's?
Three minutes per person per topic, not including questions and answers.
I feel like it could go a lot longer, too, if everybody spoke for three minutes on every single topic.
I think, I feel that most of the neighbors that I've met with and received emails and phone calls have agreed that these are the topics, that they fully understand that they've already provided three minutes, in some cases, more, so I, I think they're comfortable with the agenda.
Clarification to the name, when you say neighbors, do you mean village or town?
They were town, so, yep.
But this is a meeting for everyone, so what if there's somebody new that comes in with different issues? Do they not get to speak then?
They can speak.
Because it's, and if we go on your agenda, though, they couldn't.
I can add number nine, any other concerns, but like I said, these are the concerns I've collected over the last year.
They still get three minutes if they wanna speak.
Catch on.
Or if people wanna speak in favor of the current plat and the development, that would be something that I'd like to hear as well.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? John, are you then going to change your agenda, 'cause I need to post it in a possible quorum?
Yeah, is this in, did you send this in a Word document, or?
Uh, yeah.
It's a Word?
She didn't, yeah.
Yeah, it was a Word, I think.
Yeah, I can just copy and paste it tonight, and I'll email it to you, so you have it in the morning.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Okay.
John, number nine, you can be such others and further items. I'll give you that.
All right, John, you said you had nothing, okay. So, we're not reinstating the ordinance committee at this point, I understand it, but I would like to nominate people to fill those slots, at least what Lisa has, I guess Lisa has to keep track of everything on a spreadsheet. John Russell had said he was interested in the vacant trustee position, and I'm not running for reelection, and I'm more than happy to nominate Melissa to take my position as a village board member on the committee, and Heidi Murphy has expressed her interest to fill the citizen member of a slot, so I would like to nominate John Russell and Melissa Ratcliffe to fill the village positions on the ordinance committee, and Heidi Murphy to fill the citizen member, and we'll have to get their contact information, obviously, if and when we decide to meet as an ordinance committee.
I'm a little confused, I thought earlier we discussed about not really having the ordinance committee, which is not fun.
It still exists on our website as an official committee, whether or not it meets.
It's gonna serve no purpose, though.
I personally don't think it does.
It'll be like an ad hoc committee, it's architecture.
If you wanna get rid of it, that's a separate agenda item.
I guess I'm not sure why renominating people to a committee that is not existing.
I'm just filling in slots as placeholders on the, on the sheet at this point. So, well, if we do have to have a committee, like John was talking about, for some structure, at least we've got people in place.
It just seems like a waste of renominating people to committees that doesn't meet, doesn't do anything, but that's what we wanna do.
And, and that it could change the, after April as well.
Yeah, trust me, committee openings change all the name. So, I'll nominate John Russell and Melissa Ratcliffe as village members, and Heidi Murphy as a citizen member of the ordinance committee to fill the positions that Lisa has open. Is there a second?
Second, Kevin.
Okay. Motion in a second, any other discussion?
Yeah, as Jennifer and Phyllis agreed to be the other three citizen members then, along with Heidi.
Yeah, they, they're on board. They've had previous conversations with them, yeah.
Is, so at some point it changed to three citizen members instead of three trustees?
I think it's three trustees and.
I'm looking right at that. It's five members, two village board members, and three citizen members.
That's right, but is that with the ordinance?
It's the website.
Yeah, that's what's, that's what we want.
It's in link memo, I had it after this.
Imagine if the ordinance review committee needed to be updated.
It's a never-ending mess. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Attorney, legal briefings and status updates.
Well, other than getting the number of people on the committee wrong, we do have the Town of Pleasant Springs fire contract, as John was pointing out, that has been done. The vacation of the right-of-way next summit has been filed and is in place. The emergency services building easement, I think, Lisa, you, you have that?
We got signatures for you tonight.
So, now we'll record that, and that will be in place, and we're working on some other contracts, but some of these things had been hanging around for a while.
Okay. All right, Matt?
Couple staff members I'd like to recognize, Public Works Director, J.J. Larson's done a really great job with fielding all the various TDS complaints, that some of you may or may not hear of, they come, they pop up on Facebook a lot, and J.J. takes a lot of the, a lot of the grief, and if you haven't heard, it's because he's done it as much of a job to keep it from, you know, becoming an issue. What are the complaints, if you don't mind me asking? Well, J.J. will give an update here shortly. Oh, thank you, sorry. There's plenty of them. And, and then, and then also, Sean, Sean Brusiger just taking the initiative to break forward that miracle, miracle league field. It's exciting. Yeah, it's awesome.
Okay, Aaron?
How was your vacation?
All right, chief labor, anything?
No.
Okay. John?
Aaron, can you share your, what you're supposed to do if you fall in a river full, is it crocodiles or aleaures?
You just float. They have motion detectors in their skin.
Someone tells me you have.
All right.
Where did you go, Aaron?
J.J., you're up.
Australia.
Costa Rica.
Oh, Costa Rica, okay.
Hey, J.J., you got some video of you behind the wheel of a truck?
No!
Nobody had any.
It's burned in my mind, waving to you.
Very, very slow with the big truck. I'll be brief, in the interest of, we do have a very patient resident here this evening who wants to speak about a specific complaint that's come up. Last week and the week before, I've received a couple calls about placements of green pedestals, and referred them to MyTech, it's the third party, I don't know if you guys recall, the third party that TDS brought on to kind of, either go between, between the village and TDS, and from what I understand, they've met out there and kind of had initial discussions, but, long story short, there are areas where TDS is not always in the side or in the back of properties, but in the front, in the right-of-way, in different easements, and so, there are people with concerns about the pedestals, and specifically in one area, one neighborhood in particular, just because it is, there's people who've taken care to, to have really well-managed landscape lawns and things like that, so I believe you'll hear more about that momentarily. From our perspective, they've been better than I anticipated. Honestly, the crews were here much longer since winter, didn't show up until a couple weeks ago, and while we get a lot of calls from concerned residents, I was expecting much worse from these subcontractors, so, assuming restoration goes well, which at this point is just kind of a promise that we receive from them, they've, they've taken more care than, than I was anticipating, so I've been pleasantly surprised. That being said, we do have issues with people's concerns about placements, people being made aware of an easement that they didn't know they had on their property, things like that, and I anticipate those will keep coming, as more and more pedestal, there's gonna be hundreds of these green pedestals placed all over, and it's been a long time since a utility came in and did this, everything else has kind of dead-existing since plats were wooden placed, so unless there are specific questions for me, we're kind of still in the middle of it. Are, are they putting the pedestals by the other pedestals, or are they putting them off in the? That's the concern. Out of nowhere? Well, that's the, the issue that's been brought up most to me in the last week and a half or so, is why didn't they, and I haven't spoken with anyone from TDS about particular instances, I'm assuming they have reasons, whether it's required clearances, easements were typed, how many things are already in there, or may, may have just been, you know, it's easier here, it's easier there. We, with the sheer number of pedestals, the thing I guess I'd be afraid of, from village perspective, is there are existing easements and things like that, so nobody's gonna want one anywhere, I mean, if somebody came to my door and said.
Yeah, but I think if you put it by, you know, the other ones, that makes more logical sense than having one in the backyard, you got one right in front of your house.
There's absolutely ways of, I think, when Mike and I looked at their right-of-way permit, our concern was more village infrastructure, we weren't thinking about that, I mean, we'd still be looking at their plans, and we were thinking about individual properties, and things like that, but that being said, I think maybe they're, hopefully there's room to work with people that do bring in other concerns. I guess we're, we may see.
Did you, are they done for the season then?
They had some workers out in the snow after the first event, we had a couple of diggers tickets come through the other day, so, I think, the, when I spoke with them before, the thing we wanted them to do first was get through our right-of-way crossings, so hopefully, that's the work, if they're not done, they're, they're continuing those, finishing up. Are they still on track in timing with the? I haven't gotten an update, I gotta believe they are, just because they had an extra. Cause they were talking April, right? Well, it depends, I, I think the last one I got officially from somebody, not officially, but kind of off of the record from TDS was midsummer.
You go in and punch in your zip code, it'll give you an estimated time for your neighborhood.
I have, speaking with other Public Works folks in the areas where they've been previously, initial reports now that I'm getting out of Sun Prairie are that the restoration there has been really good, they went through what we're in the middle of right now, where everybody's upset, but that they did a good job restoring everything back to. Sometimes it's just education, people see that a mess is left, and they feel it should be cleaned up right away, but it's really, can't be cleaned up until it's spring. But there are some, you know, sometimes there are, I mean, we've had reports of, you know, crews that left garbage. I mean, that's unacceptable, you know, but, you know, it's, you know, they just have to circle back, sometimes there's always various subcontractors and layers to deal with, but, I said, you have to do a good job clearing stuff up as soon as possible.
Well, that's, so, so you actually had a talk to TDS about the concerns, some folks, where the pedestals are located, and maybe steering the direction of, to keep it close to where the other ones are, or?
Um, not yet, not specifically with TDS, no. I suppose we could reach out, I think. Dealing with the contractor, are you right now? Oh, I mean, we, all I've done at this point is I'll follow up if there's a complaint with, I'll typically go through MyTech, and then he'll follow back with me, like, like Matt said, with the trash, or when, when I did have concerns with something, he did the right way, there was a sidewalk, an curb issue, and some other things, he's gotten them to take care of.
But you have a specific point of contact that's easy to get ahold of?
Okay.
All right.
Now, Mr. Hanson here.
Okay.
Resident who can speak more specifically.
Couple minutes of your guys' time. First name is Jeff and last name Hanson, I live at 104 Arberry Court. I've been in the village since nineteen eighty-nine. I live in a subdivision called Forest Ridge, which was a parade site, and I'm assuming, by all the fresh faces, Lee is probably the only one that recognizes that.
Not a freshie.
It's okay.
What's going on?
It, it was a, I, I would say, the kickoff of the village at Cottage Grove. It was kind of a landmark time in the village where we had growth, the parade site was modest homes, not elaborate homes, but they did it right. Our utilities and communications were on the rear of the property, unlike some of the current developments that are going on, where you see pedestals in the front, in the utility space in the road, so I guess what I'd like to say is that I'm here to fight for Forest Ridge, I know that there's a lot of people that aren't gonna see those pedestals until spring, but there are options, and I understand when you bring in a fiber into an existing subdivision, you don't have a lot of options. I think, rather than you got, fighting with you, with, with you on this aspect, just drive around the village and recognize how many green pedestals we have, and the option could be easily a vault, that being a flush-mounted utility that these fiber optics could go into, wouldn't be as ugly as the current pedestals that are going into place, and so I guess what I'm saying is, I hope that you guys, as the village, recognize that that's an easement that's shared by homeowners, and that green pedestal is gonna look pretty ugly if we have them all cropping up throughout the, the village with time, and I know that. And I know that there was access given to TDS, but I think there's other options that we can explore. I know everybody in my subdivision is for technology, love to have the multiplication of, of services, both telecommunications, but when you start adding into the easements and that access, the pedestals, they look real ugly if they sit in the front of your house. And if you come into the Forest Ridge subdivision, you'll recognize all of those were done very well and placed at the rear of the homes where that easement was intended and is being maintained. The pedestals currently now are being placed right next to sidewalks and in the front of the, of the homes. And I agree, I love the fact that we'd love to have, those pedestals would be great in the rear of our homes where we could certainly blend in with the current ones, but not a eyesore in the front of our lawns.
Are they, are they already in your area, Melissa?
So, so they, they came in about a week and a half ago. And I, I, I give Intercon a, a great deal of respect for how they've done a nice job. They're keeping an eye on, one, the current services and they're, you know, trying to make this as invasive, less invasive as possible. And what they're doing is a phenomenal job, but that, with that said, the pedestals are now starting to show up after they've done the tunneling from home to home and in between the access points.
So you are seeing them up, not in the rear, but.
So, I believe there was a half a dozen pedestals that were put up in our subdivision and then that's one, oh crap. And it hasn't made it to Arberry Court, but currently we'd have ugly mailboxes in the next several days, I would suspect.
So JJ, was there any alternatives provided to this so far, or is that something you said you were checking into?
Well, I think, as it stands right now, it's, the project was bid for pedestals. The main access, a pedestal's easy to access or to work on and less potential problems. I think, at this point, pedestals are what's anticipated by TDS. And I'm hopeful that we can go to a flush-mounted vault. I don't think there's any, any reason or any of the people in Arberry Court that would oppose to have something flush because you're not gonna see it, you know, under a mowed grass.
Is there, for the current pedestals that are up, JJ, do you know if that can be redone to be in the back or to be flush-mounted or?
I think in the back, yeah. I, I gotta believe TDS will push back hard on that, everybody, crews, put things in their own.
So, for the Arberry Court, Forest Ridge is, can you describe?
So, Forest Ridge is, well, well, number one that was abandoned, have you guys been around long enough? The grade school.
Grade school.
Okay, the grade school, Taylor Street, Forston.
Forston, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm about a mile from there, I just didn't, didn't know what it's called, yeah.
Yeah, so there's.
They live on Heather.
Oh.
At the end of Heather.
Arrow, Arrowood.
Arrowood, yeah.
So, with that said, I don't know if anybody has any questions, but Lee, what I'd ask of you is, is that easement owned by the homeowner? Or shared with the village? And if so, I would hope that if it is an easement, our easements would be, then the knowledge of that access would be shared between the homeowner and whatever utilities are gonna be plopped down on top of it.
You don't know if, if they have a pedestal there, if they go to flush mount? Granted, somebody's gonna have to go do that, but I mean, is, is it a done deal if you, as far as, I would think that you could do that myself, but.
I would think so, but I.
I mean, for cost, certainly, it's probably more expensive to put a flush mount than, because they're gonna do it as, as low cost as they can and certainly, as you said, probably easier for maintenance too, but.
It doesn't make any sense where they've been putting them in the front, because they live on Forston. And so, I mean, they're just right in the middle, in the front of the property, not next to anything. And they aren't super noticeable right now because of all the snow and the snow bays, but it's, it gets to be spring and there's no snow.
How big are they?
Three feet.
Yeah.
It's a mailbox.
Yeah, they're, they're tall.
So.
Oh, three feet high, how can that?
And they're probably a foot, foot square. You know, I, I wanna be recognized as a tree city, not, not the pet city.
Right, yeah.
Well, I, I wouldn't think it'd hurt to make a phone call to TDS and say, hey, we're getting some complaints about this.
JJ, do we have an actual agreement?
Just my right-of-way permit, that's it. Just in my mind, I would have thought that they would have just been logically putting where the others were, so it wasn't a eyesore. It's like putting a big phalanx in the middle of your, your front yard.
So, just to give you a little history, the developer that put in the parade site spent in excess of twenty grand to place the, all of the utilities to the rear of the homes, so it looks aesthetically pleasing. And I would hope that you guys maintain that throughout the village going forward, because it only makes sense if our developers have done a great job of doing it, we should do it for the entire life, life cycle of that development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, appreciate it, sorry.
All right, Sean, you got a Facebook report?
Just real quick, like JJ says, I've taken enough of your time tonight. Just wanted to, on recent photos last week, just talked about our Facebook stuff. You can see on there that we continue to engage a lot with our customers and people within the community, as well as they engage a lot with us. So we've increased that substantially over the last year and we continue to hope to do that.
Thank you. All right, we're, anything, Melissa?
No report.
Deb is still here? All right. Moving now, consider approval of vouchers, any comments, corrections or additions on vouchers?
Motion to approve.
Okay, you have a second? Motion and second to approve vouchers as presented, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passed. Correspondence, I have nothing official? Okay. Upcoming community events, anything?
February seventeenth, this will go, Ashley Calm, the Optimist. And March ninth, late return of Ed, the Optimist.
March fourth, I think, is Summit's ribbon breaking, cutting. Do you know what time it is, John? I, I had it somewhere, but I don't have it listed.
I don't know what time it is.
I mean, we'll probably get a, some kind of notice if we find out and let us know our time on March fourth. Okay. All right. Future agenda items, anybody? Don't think I have anything. Okay. At this point, I'll make a motion, the village of Cottage Grove Village Board enters into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five in one perinee deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This closed session is to discuss boundary agreements. Is there a second? Alterna a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, we have to, we'll, we'll, we'll climb it home.
Alan?
Aye.
Okay.
Almore?
Aye.
Henrick?
Aye.
Limberg?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Okay, now.